We call this a regular meeting to order. Call roll.
Mayor Querem.
Here.
Councilmember Newman.
Here.
Gomez.
Here.
McCranskey.
Here.
McCall.
Here.
Mr. Sam, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with which we pray.
Okay, so do we have any public comment tonight? No public comment. So go to approval minutes and Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve the minutes from our regular council meeting on March 7th, 2022.
Motion's been second comments. Call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCranskey.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Go to approval and where's the city clerk.
For this period, the Department of Accounts and Finances, we have invoices totaling $109,282.61. In the Department of Streets and Public Improvements, we have invoices totaling $64,930.59. In the Department of Public Safety, we have invoices totaling $117,849.60. And in the Department of Public Property and Utilities, we have invoices totaling $709,643.58. For a grand total of $1,001,706.38. Mayor, all council members present have confirmed their reviews of all invoices and now are submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve the invoices as presented.
Second.
Motion's been second comments. Call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCranskey.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Now go to regular business and city clerk Nelson.
Next item on the agenda is Resolution R-22-015. This is a resolution authorizing a collective bargaining agreement with the Police Benevolent and Protective Association between them and the city. All council members have reviewed this collective bargaining agreement and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve Resolution R-22-015.
Motion's been second comments. Call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCranskey.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is to remove from the table the table ordinance O-22-004, amending the fees for video gaming terminals. I think reference to this order since Mike, since you're the one that tabled it, then you'll be the one to move to untable. Yeah, you just moved to untable.
Moved on table. We're at 022-004.
Second. Motion's been second comments. Call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCranskey.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance O-22-004. This is a ordinance amending fees for video gaming terminals. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
Move that we approve ordinance O-22-004.
Second.
Motion's been second. Just a little history on this. So the state has allowed us, anybody that has a video gaming terminal, they've allowed municipalities to charge these establishments $25 per video game terminal or machine on a yearly basis. It's a licensing fee that's issued by the city. Several years ago, the state was receiving total proceeds from the total proceeds of sales or what was wagered, 25% tax. And municipalities, we got 5% tax. Couple of years ago, the state increased their tax from 25% to 29%, but they left municipalities at 5%. There was a community, a suburb up in Chicago, that because of that, because they left the state of the municipalities at 5%, they initiated their own push tax. And essentially what that meant is every time somebody went in to play a machine in their community and they pulled the lever, the municipality got one cent. They got a penny. So the gaming industry didn't like that, so there was a lawsuit that was filed. And then the state stepped in and they decided to give municipalities the opportunity to have a push tax, but they gave a very short window as when to do that. It was like three weeks. There were some communities that were meeting on, councils that were meeting on Sundays to pass an ordinance for the push tax because they wanted it. But that lapsed long ago. So what they did recently, I think to make up for the slight on municipalities on increasing the tax, is they have allowed municipalities to increase or collect instead of $25 per machine, $250 per machine. So that is what this ordinance here is about. This money that would be, we have 97 terminals, I think, in the city. So at $250, I think that comes to $24,500. That money would all go to our pensions, our fire pensions. We're funded right now at about 56%. We need to get those pensions up. It takes a lot of money to increase this, but every little bit helps. So this money would be earmarked for our fire pensions. So that would be at least around $24,500 every year. And that works like, just like somebody who's got a 401K, the more money that you contribute to your 401K, you know, during a very good investment year, you're going to make a very good return. So that's what we're looking at. So don't leave it at that. Any comments?
I want to mention one other thing that I made a couple of changes since the last reading on this. On section eight, where it talks about number of licenses, we have 19 now. I put in a number of a max of 25. That's up for discussion whether or not you want to leave it there or if you want it to be a higher value or lower.
One thing about that, if we put it at 25 and we get 25 at some point, and somebody else comes in and wants one, we can always change. Always, you know, side.
25, yeah, I think that's fine.
But it's kind of slow right now anyway. So.
So the thing about this $250 is 24,000, you know, right now we collect $2,400, you think? $2,400 totals. We're going to 24.5 if this passes. So, you know, it's, again, it all goes towards pensions. And the thing about pensions, we pay property taxes to fund our fire and police pensions. So we, I think right now our levy for fire pensions is 600,000. And police is 500, something like 500.
590.
Yeah, 590. So anytime that we're able to take money that's unexpected, which this is, and we can earmark it not to go to our general fund, but to go to our pensions, is a very good thing. So essentially, you know, a no vote on this is basically a vote for increasing property taxes. So.
Teresa, remind us where the 206,000 that we already collect from the gaming goes into right now?
That goes into Economic Development Fund.
And that's the, that's the 5% tax.
And that's paying off the debt for economic development.
So right now we are levying $648,223 for fire and $590,276 for police.
So we were that close on the levy that if we didn't collect an extra $20,000 this year, that that will cause a tax.
We would have to do a truth and taxation hearing, which then increases your pension or your levy over the 5% mark.
And it's not just one year. It's 24,500 based on our today's calculations, based on 97 machines. That could go up and go down depending on where the machines are. They've been growing since 2015. They've been gradually growing. So this is every year. This isn't just a one-time.
I guess the one thing I'd say about these types of fees, it's money that you weren't necessarily expecting to have, almost like in your own personal life, you're not expecting to get that money. Now put it towards something that you'll see an effect down the road. You weren't expecting the money, put it away for something that you'll see the benefit down the road.
These, they have an idea of this tax is going to go on.
I'm pretty sure they're all pretty aware of what's going on at the state level with this. And given that we're one of the few communities in our area that hasn't hiked this all the way to the 250.
They've been notified by the state.
That it's possible for us to go up.
Oh, yeah.
I think the other thing is that, you know, typically 10% of your property tax bill is for police and fire pensions. So for us to try and hold the line on that, I think that would be. No, no, just for, no, at least that's my tax bill. I just looked at it, it was like 10.2% of my tax.
Oh, your total tax. Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, totally. So if we can hold the line on keeping the property taxes as is, or delay at least, if nothing else, I think that would be a good thing.
And this $206,000 that Mike mentioned, that's the 5% tax that we're bringing in every year. Again, that fluctuates too depending on how much is wagered. But this is right now, as Teresa mentioned, we're using that to pay debt. That money's going into the Economic Development Fund and we're using that to pay an economic development debt. And that debt drops off next year. So we're going to be sitting here with $206,000 and we're going to, we'll be able to take a good portion of that money and put towards pensions as well.
I mean, I think that our, we're seeing an uptick in retirees and which means we've got more expenses that we're going to be responsible for. We just don't want to be caught short. I mean, it is a concern that, you know, we've got to address.
And we have a fire chief that's retiring and we're going to start paying him his pension. And his replacement obviously won't be making as much money as he is when he comes in. So the contributions to the pensions are not going to be as great. They will not be nearly as much as what we've been putting in because of our.
Did I just learn tonight, Teresa, that folks, place your fire that are on disability are being paid out of the pension fund? So that, I mean, that's a variable. We have, we have no idea. I mean, you could, we've got a couple of police officers now that are on disability because of that recent accident, that fire. And that money is being, it's draining that pension fund. And I don't think we expected those kinds of things to happen. I don't.
Right now, I think we have three firemen and one policeman that are, that's on disability.
And that's fine. I mean, that's, that's what we should be doing with that funds. We just need to be sure that we're adequately funded down the road.
I know when I talked to Waderbach about the pensions to get a feel for the healthiness of the funds, Stephanie had said, when you get a chance to be able to put smaller, what we would consider smaller amounts of money towards the pensions, to take advantage of being able to do that. And one of those would be if we sell property, I mean, put some of that towards it. We did talk about that with Perry Plaza, put a portion of that towards pensions because you never know five years down the road, what other costs are going to look like. And you may get hung up like some of the other communities that are in a pension crisis, right, at this point in time. So it's kind of putting away the money that you didn't expect to necessarily get for future uses is definitely a benefit. And, you know, and I learned this too last month, that as you increase that percentage funded, it increases our credit rating. I didn't know that. And we actually got a credit de-rating last year. We actually went down. So we need to figure out ways to keep bringing that up. And this might be a, I mean, we need to do that.
When I look at the 19 companies in town that are using, that are using these gaming terminals, most of them are doing very, very well with it. And I just don't think that raising the cost of that fee is going to cause any great harm in any one of them.
What amount brought in from machines last year?
52 million.
52 million was.
That was plain.
Was plain.
That's plain. Obviously, the higher that number is, the more money that is made by the establishments. But, you know, it's kind of interesting because when you look at the, when you go back to say 2016, 31 million. 2017, these are calendar years. 2017, 32 million. 2018, 34 million. And then 2020 was a pandemic year, so the receipts were 25 million. But in 2021, also a pandemic year because there were actually a couple of weeks where it was shut down, 51 million. So that's just, I, it's a huge jump if you just go to the previous non-pandemic year of 34 million, 35. It's just a huge jump. The state also, part of that is because the state only allowed establishments to have five machines. They increased that to six. And a lot of these establishments increased their number to terminals to six. And I think there was one additional establishment who jumped on with six machines.
So you see that still staying at 51 possibly?
I don't know. That's, it's, you know.
That's a pretty big.
It is. It's been going for six years.
I agree.
There's no reason why. This shouldn't continue. This is almost a $20 million jump.
That's the thing.
It's amazing how much money is being wagered.
So I think we have an opportunity, you know, and it's, and it's, money is going to be put that we're very good use, which is funding pensions for our important employees. Place the fire.
This is kind of a question connected to most of these. I'm sure there's probably a lot of factors into it. But why have these pensions been so funded so low for these agents?
They weren't, you know, Jeff Egish was here.
They were talking about because they use a different format. And now, why are these funded so low? The projections, did the projections not go high enough? Were we able to put enough money into them? Were the investments that were made to these funds were not made good enough to be able to go ahead and bring in more money to be able to support those?
I think it's a combination of all of those.
Yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't think that generally trying to use what some people normally would consider syntax to be able to fund everything. And, you know, being, and I've gone to this Vegas, there's a lot of people that are unemployed, homeless, because they have a very serious gambling problem. And so when that happens, you take the homes, they're longer in the taxing, and they're sold for a lot less money, so the taxes higher become less. I just kind of have an issue with it.
Well, most, these, these pensions are being financed through property taxes. You know, Teresa read that those, that's what, that's what's funding these. It's an opportunity to cut into that and, you know, hopefully bring it down. But we've had a couple of people go on disability and that really, they drain a lot off of the, you know, off the, off the funds. And as you heard earlier, and I think it was Chuck mentioning, he's not here, and they, you know, they switched over to a different formula. And that, that affected it. And when we, these are also going to be consolidated.
The state could have.
Yeah, exactly. So it's going to be consolidated and we don't know exactly what that's going to do.
Yeah.
I think it'll be a better thing when they consolidate the fire, police pensions together, but.
Equal distribution possible.
Exactly.
Well, fire already is, and they've already seen positive growth in those funds. So I'm, I'm comfortable with the consolidation for, think of IMRF. It's the same type of setup and IMRF is very, very well. So being able to do that same process with the pensions, I'm very comfortable with that process happening. So we're already seeing it with fire, so that's good.
Need for the comments? Okay, motion has been second. Call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez. McCranskey.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is ordinance O-22-005. This is a, an ordinance amending fees for garbage and recycling collection. This is, yeah, this is the second reading. This is the second and final reading. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve ordinance O-22-005.
Second.
Motion's been second. Hold on a second. Oh, yeah, the, the ordinance.
Which one?
The one we just read, this should be this 26 should be 32 for the out of town collections.
Okay, well, before you vote, I guess you can make note that.
You can do an.
What's that?
You can have a motion to amend it.
We can do that now?
Yes.
So, but we weren't, we didn't take a vote, did we?
No, you had to vote on the amendment first.
So are we? We need a, we need a motion to amend.
Well, don't you finish this motion first, John? Is that what you said?
No, we, if you move to amend something that's on the table, you have to deal with the amendment first.
Okay.
Before you can deal with the final proposition.
So we need a motion to amend this ordinance for, for either reason why, changing the section one.
Yeah, you need to say where you're changing it.
You getting that, John?
Out of town rates from what, what it is and what does it say now?
It says 26 now.
26 of 32?
Yeah.
I move that we approve the amendment of ordinance O-22-005 to amend the out of town garbage pickup rate from $26 as currently stated in the ordinance, ordinance, ordinance to $32.
Second.
Motion's been second comments. Call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCranskey.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
So is the other motion still hanging out there?
Yeah, but now you're voting on it as amended.
Okay. So should we restate it? I know motion.
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
So the, it was, it was, did you second it or? Okay, so any comments?
So we're voting on the amended ordinance O-22-005.
Any other comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCranskey.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the second reading for ordinance O-22-006, amending the budget for the fiscal year commencing May 1st, 21, and ending on April 30, 22. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve ordinance O-22-006.
Motion's been second comments. Call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCranskey.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Next order, our next item on the agenda is suspension for the requirement for a second reading for ordinance O-22-007, authorizing a contract with Energy Resource Roofers. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this directive and it is submitted for disposition.
Okay, I move that we suspend, we approve the suspension of a requirement for a second reading of ordinance O-22-007.
And a reason for suspension.
Okay, so the reason for, reason why we're suspending the second reading is because this roofing contract would be to replace the roof that's currently on Perry Plaza. Or should we say, put a roof on Perry Plaza because the, because the existing roof is Swiss cheese. And every time it rains, it pours. The tenants, yeah, it pours and the tenants are the victims of that. It's, it's in terrible shape. Time is of the essence and we have to move on. We've gotten a quote from this roofer before. He was by far the lowest bidder in the past and his schedule is such that we can really capitalize on getting a decent roof on that building.
And unfortunately Perry didn't do us any favors because they didn't do anything with the roof. So, any, any motion has been second. Any other comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCranskey.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance O-22-008. This is not.
Seven. We just suspended the second reading.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped that in my vote sheet here. So next item on the agenda is ordinance O-22-007, authorizing a contract with Energy Resource Roofers. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve ordinance O-22-007.
Second.
Motion's been second comments. Call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCranskey.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance O-22-008. This is the first reading of an ordinance authorizing an industrial pretreatment program enforcement response plan required by the EPA. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we advance ordinance O-22-008 to the second reading.
Second.
Motion's been second comments.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCranskey.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
So, well, thank you. Go to the city manager report.
In your package, you have the fire pension report for January of 2022. You, you also have in there the bid opportunity for a new ambulance. You have all this, all the specs for what we'll be looking for with the new ambulance. Just a couple of notes on that. We are not ready to purchase or budget for the ambulance right at this point in time, but it will not be, as it says in the bid packet, shall not be delivered any earlier than September 1st of 2024. So obviously that will get you into the next budget for this year 24, which will then, as we've talked about in the previous meeting with the budget, so that will be falling off, so this will be picking up where that has fallen off. So this is replacing our 2011 ambulance and, which will basically go, and Jerry, you can probably talk a little bit more about this if you want, going to a truck chassis, better believe, as opposed to what looks like the van. Which then makes them a little bit more interchangeable as they age. You don't have to replace the whole thing. You can replace just the box or the chassis.
Either one.
Either one, so.
Full drive too, but then.
Any questions on that? No. Okay. I know they're anxious to get that rolling, so. I guess following the same topic, the fire chief search status, I'm going to give you an update on that, has been posted locally. We will be getting posted the next day or two to IML and electronic sources for posting the job. Appellation through April 20, or geez.
April 6.
April 6. Any, any questions on that? I know we mentioned when it comes to that time, please let us know. You do want to be involved in, in the process, we'd be glad to have council involved, so.
I just have one thing. I've got a couple of messages sent to me about some trees on the South Main Street Business District. We cut down seven trees this past week. Those trees were cut down, they were old, a few of them were 30 years old. They had been trimmed so many times, they almost had a V shape at the top because they were growing into the, into the power lines. And a lot of suckers growing through on the limbs of the tree itself. It was buckling, some of them were buckling the sidewalk. So those trees have been replaced or removed and we're replacing five of them. The one in front of the power building will not be replaced because there's utilities underneath. And there is one tree in front of meadows that will not be replaced. And those should be going in here pretty soon. And then they're starting to put the lights on the trees that are going to be permanent. Actually, they put lights on one tree so far to see how it looks. Looks great, so they're going to finish that job, so. Just an update on that. Any old business from the council?
Can I mention two things? Columbus Street, I met with the art committee last Friday, I believe it was, to go through a couple of loose ends when it comes to the design that they're looking at for, for that street. I gave them some input that we've gotten from the council on the cement cylinders and, you know, those ideas eating the arches in. In the first year, they are on board with that. They're going to be needing tomorrow to go over some of the details, but they'll be looking at replacing some of those cylinder seats with all benches. It is going to be a little bit more expensive to have the benches in, but they're looking at curved benches. I think it'll be a better layout in the long run. But they are very close, so we gave them, made sure that they're understandable, the timeline, they've got the electrical pretty much all figured out. That's one of the big things we need to get figured out for Jeff to get going on that. So very close, I would say in the next week or two, we should have something final from them.
Are we going to see the final design?
Yeah, I would suggest, yes, yes. They do a good job showing the layout and stuff, so.
The surface too, but it's going to be, it's exposed aggregate. That's what we do with the star plaque up in front of Apollo and the pebble. So that's what, that's what we're going to have. It's going to be exposed aggregate.
And then one other thing, the tree committee is also a little bit busy. They'll be meeting tomorrow as well. I'm not sure I might do both of those meetings, but they are going to be reviewing the ordinance that will be. to be reviewing the ordinance that will be coming in front of you, that's going to amend to the existing one, make it a little bit more complex and precise. So they'll be reviewing that tomorrow and getting that going, and if inventory is done, and the GIS data has been completed and is ready to submit to us. We'll be getting started on that. Actually, a couple of the trees that were highlighted in the plan to be removed have already been removed, so.
Good. Good. Old business, new business? Public comment? Your, your name?
Jonathan Mayberry. I just want to say thanks for all you guys do with me. I know, you know, we guys are here every other Monday, and I thought I'd stop in. I just want to bring something to your attention. I think this gaming, we should be proud that they went up to fifty-two million in this town. I think our poverty rate is rising, and our house values are dropping. I drive down the streets and I see houses that used to be maintained with heat now falling to spare. Gaming is, you can go out to lunch and have so easy access to gaming. I think we need to focus some of this money that we're getting on ways to improve, you know, teaching about gaming, you know, some work with, you know, Luca or something that can help people, because I think we really should look at limiting lower numbers of gaming, or make it harder to gaming, because Princeton, you know, we are, poverty rate, you know, is, we are a lot invested in this community, like all you guys do too. And it's just, we're going down this road that, you know, adding twenty million dollars of money, putting in machines, that the cities get their take, but that money goes off to the state or to these big corporations, like the truck stop, Suzies. We don't see that money anymore. It's gone. There's someone who should be putting some of this money into something that we can use to grow pensions down the road, improving our housing, our, our development, our businesses, and taxes, and, you know, putting this stuff on tax roll, you know. But I just think, hey, we've, you know, it's a vice and a night that we should really look at ways so we can take some money and help people that are dumping so much money into, you know, those machines that are not getting back. It's sad. I mean, to hear twenty million dollars more put in machines. And I would guess most of people are local people. I mean, sure, you could be every, you know, truck driver, truck stop, but the local gas stations and restaurants, you know, I see it every day when I go to lunch, people walk over there and drop forty dollars, two hundred dollars in, and they walk away with nothing. That's two hundred dollars. They could have went to our chamber uptown and bought a pair of shoes or out for dinner in prime quarter and could have got all the tax money. I don't know. Just something about this factor, but I appreciate what you guys do. I didn't mean to down everybody on that. I know it's good money. I know it's good money, and we need the money in the pensions. And, you know, but I think, Tom, we should look at, if this continues to grow, we really need to probably look at what's going to do to our city long-term, not instantly.
Can I make a real quick note? On, actually, if you look at the revenue from the gaming that we collect, actually goes into economic development fund, which is for economic growth, which, that's what that's going for. The fee for the machines is a whole separate, a whole separate type of money. But the revenue is going for improvement in the community, so.
But we're not, with that raise from twenty million to fifty million, are we getting how much more back into the economic development? Does it work?
Trying to remember what that, it did, it increased, right, that, I mean.
It's five percent of, well, the year before, well, thirty, thirty-four million, I think, was the last non-pandemic year. So you have to look at the net, because they pay out like eighty percent, I think, so they can take the twenty percent that's left over.
Roughly a hundred thousand dollars more this year.
Yeah.
So than what I originally budgeted, which was higher than the previous year. So there's extra hundred thousand almost that came in that we didn't expect. But that goes into the economic development fund, helps bring that expectation out, so.
This is Mark Womack, and when you
It's incredible. And to your earlier point, I don't think anybody up here is proud that there's fifty-two million dollars being fed. Princeton, I think, are more astonished at it. I mean, it's, it's an amazing figure when you think about it. Fifty-one million dollars, fifty-two million dollars being waged in one calendar year. I mean, it's just
Where does it come from?
Where does it come from? Yeah. You know, the, the truck stop that, I think, last year did like ten million, five hundred thousand was waged just at the truck stop. One calendar year. It's just, it's amazing. So I, you know, I don't play the machines. And, you know, I, you know, I totally get your point, and I don't totally disagree with you either. But it's a business, and
Did it tell you how much is, how much is one?
Well, they, they pay out eighty percent. Yeah. So it is pretty close. I mean, ten million was wagered, and I think what they paid out was like, well, just one billion dollars.
It's tough, too. If you limit machines, sometimes it's going to drag over Hollyville or Sheeville or Y and S, and they're paying for that money to that community. So I'm not saying either, instantly, but that growing rate scares me as an investor in Princeton. It should scare all of us, because that's going to affect us long-term, I guess. That's all I have to say. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any public comment? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn and reconvene.
I move to adjourn our regular meeting this evening and reconvene again for our council meeting on Monday, April fourth, twenty twenty-two, seven o'clock at City Hall. Motion has the second. Call roll.
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Gomez?
Aye.
McCranskey?
Aye.
McCall?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for your